Okay, so let's begin. I'm gonna call this meeting to order and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay, be resolved that the Board of Education appoint Deborah Pottenberg as District Clerk pro temp for the July 11th, 2023 organizational meeting of the Board of Education. Motion? All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, at this time, I'm going to administer the oath of office to our newly elected board members, Mary Ann Piero, Matthew Fish, and Dawn Friedman, and also our new student representative Jenna Paul Beckus. Okay, I, Mary Ann Piero.
I, Mary Ann Piero, do solemnly affirm
Do solemnly affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Board of Education of the Board of Education and and for the Chatham Central School District in and for the Chatham Central School District according to the best of my abilities according to the best of my abilities. Congratulations.
I, Matthew Fish
I, Matthew Fish
Do solemnly affirm
Do solemnly affirm
That I will support the Constitution of the United States
That I will support the Constitution of the United States
And the Constitution of the State of New York
And the Constitution of the State of New York
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties
of the Board of Education
Of the Board of Education
and and for the Chatham Central School District
and and for the Chatham Central School District
according to the best of my ability
according to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Go on.
I, Dawn Friedman, do solemnly affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Board of Education and and for the Chatham Central School District according to the best of my abilities. Congratulations, welcome aboard.
And our new student representative. I, Jenna Paul Beckus
I, Jenna Paul Beckus
do solemnly affirm
Do solemnly affirm
that I will support the Constitution of the United States
that I will support the Constitution of the United States
and the Constitution of the State of New York
and the Constitution of the State of New York
and that I will faithfully discharge the duties
that I will faithfully discharge the duties
of the student representative
the student representative
and and for the Chatham Central School District
and and for the Chatham Central School District
according to the best of my abilities
according to the best of my abilities.
You're welcome aboard. Okay, moving right along. Okay, I need a motion to approve the present agenda. Can I have a motion? All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, R1, be resolved that the Board of Education appoint Deborah Pottenberg as District Clerk for the Chatham Central School District for the 2023-24 fiscal year at the stipend of $4,300 per year. Can I have a motion? All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, at this time, the superintendent will administer my oath, and then I will turn around and administer the oath to the superintendent.
Please repeat after me. I, Deborah Pottenberg, do solemnly affirm
I, Deborah Pottenberg, do solemnly affirm
that I will support the Constitution of the United States
that I will support the Constitution of the United States
and the Constitution of the State of New York
and the Constitution of the State of New York
and I will faithfully discharge the duties of the District Clerk
and I will faithfully discharge the duties of the District Clerk
in and for the Chatham Central School District
in and for the Chatham Central School District
according to the best of my ability
according to the best of my abilities.
I, Salvatore DiAngelo
I, Salvatore DiAngelo
do solemnly affirm
do solemnly affirm
that I will support the Constitution of the United States
that I will support the Constitution of the United States
and the Constitution of the State of New York
and the Constitution of the State of New York
and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Superintendent
and I will faithfully discharge the duties of Superintendent
and and for the Chatham Central School District
and and for the Chatham Central School District
according to the best of my ability
according to the best of my abilities.
Okay, at this time, I'm going to call for a statement from any board member who would seek a nomination for the Board Officer's position. Who would like to start? Any statements?
Debbie, before we start, I have some questions. Could you summarize the policies that were put in place around officer selection? I think we had
We have one off the top of my head. I don't remember what it is, but when you're
I think there's a one-year service requirement and I don't remember
You have to serve on the board for a year. I don't know if I have to pull it up. I don't
I can pull that up.
Do you want to pull it up so we can just get, make sure that we have the exact wording?
I think it's only a few sentences. Sorry, I should have asked you to pull it out.
Yeah, I'm in board dogs. I'm just gonna find.
We only talk about this once a year and everyone forgets.
I think it's 1120. Qualifications, okay.
You want to read it?
Yeah, so as a citizen of the United States, 18 years or older, able to read and write, illegal residents of the district for continuous and uninterrupted period for at least one prior, one year prior to the election, cannot be employed by the district, the only member of his or her family that is or cannot be a member of the same household on the district board, the board of, the board of, of the district, because this is seven members. So maybe it's the next one. This is just telling the charms. Hold on. Now, you should hear it. It's 1210. Candidates for the office of the member of the Board of Education must be nominated by petition directed to the District Clerk, which is, oh, that's, that's just, that's, that's the for like if you want to become a member.
I, I was looking for the term guide.
Yeah, I know what you're looking for. I just have to find it. It could be, hold on, because that's for if you wanted to. Yes, I think that's, you're right.
It is 1320.
It is 1320. The Board Officer roles of President and Vice President will be nominated and elected by a simple majority of the Board at the annual organizational meeting for a term of one year. No board member may serve as President of the Board for more than two years, because, two consecutive years. The only instance that this limitation, limitation may be waived and a board president, and a board president be allowed to serve for a third consecutive year is in the instance that a majority of the full Board deems it in the best interest of the district. To qualify for eligibility to hold the position of Board Officer, the Board Member must have served one year in their term or be an incumbent. And it just goes on to say what the duties are.
So may, may I be recognized? Chair? I think what, what I wanted to point out is that I've been, I've been President for two years, and I, and I'm willing to serve an officer position in, in any capacity if, if that's what the Board wants. I think that this guidance, which is not state guidance, it was guidance that we put in at the district level, was intentionally created to, to rotate skill set, to build a rounded skill set across the Board. It was when we had nine members. We're now at seven. The, the language there isn't very toothy because it says that you're supposed to have a maximum of two unless, unless there's a majority approval, which doesn't really mean much, right? But I just wanted to bring that to everyone's attention, that, that, that there was a reason for that, and that we should all think about that in that while I'm, while I'm willing to you know, fulfill those, those needs, we should also think about board development. We've got a limited number of candidates here, but I just wanted to bring that to everyone's attention. I, you know, if I was in, in, in a leadership position here on the Board, the, the strengths that, that I focus on are really to act as a a balance to diverse opinions in the Board and, and the various stakeholders, so the, clearly the taxpayers, the students, the district staff. But otherwise, I don't have any plans for change. I would probably propose, although I'm willing to hear changes, I'm, I, I would probably propose the same board calendar or similar board calendar, similar committee structure. We would do the same surveying we did for committees last year. That's all. Anyone else want to speak?
So, looking at the policy, there's a technicality that I'd ask, because I, I do have an interest in serving. But due to emergency circumstances, I did live six months outside the district. That is an added conflict in the policy. That being said, as a 23-year professional educator, pursuing a PhD in policy and leadership, also a member of the community for the last 22 years, fairly consistently, except for that one period of time, I would express an interest in I would express an honor, an interest.
For which position? Okay.
Was that, was that requirement that Fred's alluding to, was that a state reg that got pulled into the policy? Or was that an internal policy that we passed?
No, I think that's, I think that's a regulation, isn't it, that you have to live within the district to be on the board, correct? Is that what you're talking about?
We, we explored that with, with legal, and legal felt that it was, at the time you had expressed it was temporary, and it was incidental, and legal felt that it was non-confrontational as long as you ended up coming back, which you did, and that's the information, best information I can share.
And I remember that conversation.
And we did explore that, to be sure.
Yeah, there were definite circumstances in my life that required a temporary
If, if it works for the Senate, the federal Senate, I think they get away with it.
Okay, do I have any statements for the Vice Presidency?
I would be willing to take on the Vice Presidency. Fred and I have worked together before, and I think, I think that would work out great, you know, whenever times that he can't be here, I go, I'm not ready to be a President, so I was never gonna throw my hat in the ring for that. But I wouldn't mind, you know, future years learning, so I think it would be great to be close enough to it but not actually have the mantle on me.
Okay. Do I have any more statements? Okay, so I need to have someone's call for a motion. Two, four, so it could be
Well, we haven't had any nominations, Muriel.
You have to nominate, so I, I, Muriel Faxon will nominate so and so to be President, and then we have to see if there's a second.
Muriel, I will nominate Fred to be President for next year.
Okay, second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. All right, are we good?
Yep, now we should administer the oath to Fred.
Yeah, I'm gonna administer the oath to Fred, and then you will take over the meeting, so you'll well, that, that's, that's gonna be next up to you. You take over after. I, Fred Hutchinson, do solemnly affirm
I, Fred Hutchinson, do solemnly affirm
that I will support the Constitution of the United States
that I will support the Constitution of the United States
and the Constitution of the State of New York
and the Constitution of the State of New York
and that I will faithfully, faithfully discharge the duties of
and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of
Board of Education President
Board of Education President
and and for the Chatham Central School District
in and for the Chatham Central School District
according to the best of my abilities
according to the best of my abilities.
Okay, the President will now take over from this point and assume the role as Chairperson of the meeting. So we're now on four.
Do I have a nomination for the Vice President, Board of Education? And a second? All in favor? Oh, I'm sorry, are there any opposed?
That was a motion to nominator. Do we have a motion to elect her?
Oh, do you have a motion to elect Mary Ann Piero for Vice President of the School Board? Second? All in favor? Any opposed?
I, Mary Ann Piero
I, Mary Ann Piero
do solemnly affirm
do solemnly affirm
that I will support the Constitution of the United States
that I will support the Constitution of the United States
and the Constitution of the State of New York
and the Constitution of the State of New York
and I will faithfully discharge the duties
and I will faithfully discharge the duties
of the Board of Education Vice President
of the Board of Education Vice President
and and for the Chatham Central School District
in and for the Chatham Central School District
according to the best of my ability
according to the best of my ability.
We'll be on the consensus agenda. Do I have a motion to appoint officers and other, oh, wait, I'm sorry. A motion to accept the organizational meeting consensus agenda, G through I. All in favor?
Normally, we do a questions and comments there.
Okay. Are there any questions about the agenda?
I I have one question here, but it might be best saved for the next executive session. I don't or, or safety discussion. Nothing else.
Okay, so all in favor? H1, motion to appoint officers and other annual appointments. So all of these are listed?
And we, we just approved them all, and that's why it's good to stop there for comments.
So, there was a lot in there. They're all online, or there will be there will be comment. Motion to continue the Board of Education policies and code of ethics. Sorry, I'm new to this. R3, be resolved that policies and code of ethics, Board of Education, continue in force for the current fiscal year unless duly modified. Do we have any thoughts about modifications?
The Policy Committee has been reviewing that. NISBA sent us a sample of what their code of ethics is. It's in process. So I'm thinking that we go ahead and do this until
This is just a motion to advance all current policies in, in, in the code of conduct, so I don't think there's any need for over concern because everything is under review.
Okay, yep.
Maybe revisit this in the future.
Absolutely, yeah. So you need a motion.
Do I have a motion? Second? All in favor? Any questions? Motion to adopt the annual Board Handbook. That be resolved, Board of Education, adopt the Board Handbook, unless motion? Second? Any questions? All in favor? Any opposed? Under K R5, be resolved that Board of Education establish the following standard workday for Chatham Central School District employees whose titles are reported to Employees Retirement System, the ERS, as required by the New York State Local Retirement System effective July 1, 2015. Do I have a motion? And then, yep. Any questions? All in favor? Any opposed? Have a opportunity for public comment at this point. Dr. DiAngelo, is there anybody online?
There is not.
Okay. Any board comments at this time?
We're almost at committee season, Fred. I thought I'd let you know that I just emailed you some templates that do not exist in the shared drive, that I've been using the last two years. Save you some work.
Thanks. Any, any other comments?
Sign looks great.
Yeah.
I was surprised at the direction of, after all that.
Yeah, that was their final determination, so.
Well, the sign doesn't come back around. It's concrete. That's gonna be there for a while. That sign's gonna hopefully outlive all of us. Well, we haven't, it's missing the sign on top, right? There's like a logo or something? Oh, it's there now.
Yeah, we kept it all.
I, you know, I think that this is a good point in the season, you know, as we're, we accepted the Board, or we accept the Board Calendar today, right? Is that, is that in?
Yeah.
So, we can always amend the calendar, but do you guys want to have like a three-minute conversation at that? Because we discuss it every year, and it's not, it's not a perfect calendar, just like the way we meet throughout the year and the way we spread agenda, and I think it's, it's Fred's job to figure out how to spread the agenda around the calendar. I've been pretty light touch on it. But there's been some people that wanted to look at it in the last few years, so this is a good moment before we start into the year. We've discussed a lot of things, and there's a lot of ideas, and, but we've made pretty small changes, so.
I know that not long ago, maybe a couple months ago, we did discuss going to one meeting, and then having a professional board development meeting four or five times a year. I don't, I don't reflect that at this point, do I? Also, if it gets busy, that, so it might be hard to do some of that, especially around budget.
It, it's nearly as complicated as figuring out the regular school calendar and all the constraints that are in there. That's how we ended up with the current calendar, but that doesn't mean it's perfect. So we could reassess, like, we can always update the calendar, but this is usually the meeting where we discuss it.
For now, for now, we'll go with the calendar that we have, and then
Yeah, it is, we can discuss it, but
Especially since we're going to be having that building project and we're gonna have to be updating the board on everything that's happening there.
Yeah, and the complexities of it, having a three-minute conversation.
No, no, and I don't think we're gonna, I don't think we're gonna change the calendar right now. It's all written up, but if you guys want something from Fred, him planning it now at the beginning of the season is the time for him to start thinking about it. Because it's mostly what I did the last two years, as I said to Debbie and Diane. What did we do last year? And
Yeah, and I mean, you know, who knows? I think we
We move stuff around, the agenda, but
In general, I think we want to become a more efficient, you know, more efficient board, a little bit more targeted. Shorter meetings is the same as fewer meetings. If we do, if we do it right, so. But, but as far as making changes to that, it doesn't sound like anybody.
Okay. I, I feel good with that, too, by the way. I came to the same conclusion, but I know that it comes up every year.
I'd like to welcome our newest board member and our student rep. Thank you for coming in the summer, this summer. All right, any other comments? I have a motion.
Just a couple brief comments. I, I too was going to mention the sign. Thank you to Mike, SEI Designs, Andy, and Saxton Sign. They worked through some of the challenges with zoning, and it's here. We've got a few finishing touches. They gotta backfill it and connect it to electrical. NISIC still has to help us out a little bit there, and then we've got to do some programming and learning how to use it, but we're, we're probably weeks away from lighting it up, and it's kind of exciting, so. Thanks, and, and also Chris on the facilities committee at Muriel, who've been with us all along with this, so it's finally nice to see it come to fruition. I just wanted to compliment everybody who was involved in graduation. I thought graduation was phenomenal. You know, the week before graduation, we were very hopeful that it would be outside. Mr. Trudy set up chairs and Was instrumental in in giving us right up until Friday morning as an option. And we were, I think initially, we were a little disappointed to have to move it inside, but I think. All in all, it was comfortable, cool, and and dry inside, and I couldn't be happier with. Watching our, and and you have, you all have, several of you here have children who graduated and watching all the families enjoy that that evening, so. I wanted just kudos to John and and the team here for putting all the time and effort into that. Just a kind of reminder, you've heard this a couple of times, but summer activities have started. E S Y, our Extended School Year Program, started last Wednesday on the fifth. And all of our summer programming started this past Monday, so our Arbor Academy for our middle school students and our M E D Academy. Have started and also the high school credit recovery program, so we have twenty-three students who've showed up for the Arbor Academy at the middle school. It's actually being held at M E D because of the air conditioning and and the facilities, but that's a great turnout. And again, you've heard us say that we made it a four-day, four-week program, which seems to have been more attractive to everyone involved, so. We're really excited and it's great to see the kids back and some excitement in the building, so. With that, just as a matter of. Board meetings this summer, we do have a very short meeting on August fifteenth to set the tax rate. Please know that you will not need to give up that evening. We're going to be here for a few minutes. The board approves the tax rate and we go home, but the next big meeting of the summer will come on August twenty-second. That will indeed be a a a large meeting packed full of all the resolutions that are needed to start off the school year. We are doing some interviewing and hiring this last couple of days, and that will continue until we fill fill all our vacancies. Just today, I offered a position to a new business teacher here at the high school to replace Mr. Lewis. That that person has accepted the position, I don't know if you knew that, and he'll be on the agenda for August twenty-second. And we have a number of other positions that we're we're trying to fill for the fall, so we move right along with that. And that's it for my report, Mr. President.
Wondering if.
Yeah, that was a big question in our office today, so as soon as the next couple of days we get closer to. The electrical, knowing when they say come meet us and stuff like that, I'll make sure the board knows, and then maybe we can have a ribbon cutting or something out there. We're gonna, the first, the first photograph is going to be a photograph of the board, no. There are, I, there are some restrictions, as you know, from zoning, so we have to be very careful. There won't be any crazy animation. The the frequency at which the information will change will will not be rapid. And any imagery we use will be still imagery, so we still use photographs and and things like that, but we're going to be very conservative. We we have hours for which the sign is in operation, brightness considerations that will be sensitive to the to the. Residents in the area, and then we are allowed to use it one hour after any major event, so that we can. Put on messaging so people could see it. Yeah, so I think all in all, we're we're thankful that the the village zoning board approved our. Our application and we're moving forward with that. It was all, Mike, Mike went with our architect and also Mike has mentioned, I'm just passing this along. Our sign vendor had also sent represented representatives both times, and he he was, the second guy was very helpful in in assuring the. The zoning board that the things that they were seeking to have put in place were were manageable and and feasible, so. We're thankful for partners like that as well.
Okay. Time for the business consensus agenda. Be resolved that Board of Education to accept the consensus agenda, O Q of July eleven, twenty twenty-three, business meeting as written. Can I have a motion? All in favor?
Well, I have a question. We have some resignation notices here that are marked executive. Is it appropriate to note these in public today? Or when does the, when does this become public information, I guess?
Where, which ones are you referring?
Oh, I'm looking at. Specifically P one, but you know, there's some others here.
Oh. Although the executive content in terms of the letter is is the the recommended action is public, right? So the description is there, so I don't see.
Okay. I, you know. John's been with us thirty years. So. That's. Basically his entire career. I I I can't think of the right set of words to to acknowledge that, but I I didn't want to let the media, I didn't want to let this go without. Bringing it up here and comment here that. He's he's, I I know we got him here for another another year, right, and we, so we can have another note here, but. You know, it's it's notable that we, that he he stayed with us for thirty years and we got a transition year here, I guess. It will happen if we don't accept. So that's all I just.
No, I'm glad you you pointed it out. Sometimes agenda items get put in here and. You deal with them and inform you about them and they kind of, I forget about them, but certainly we'll have an opportunity to. Not only acknowledge his service to the district over the next year, but to have a chance to formulate a plan for transitioning to. The next leadership in the high school.
And I, I don't think he's been shy about telling people, but clearly the public should should be aware.
You know, while while we are talking about John, his service to the district and and everything. There are some subtleties that he illustrated in his leadership in the last few months that I think are worth noting. You know, he presented at National Honor Society, he spoke. He was, you know, at all the state baseball games and at graduation, and his own son graduated that that night. And, you know, it is a testimony to his character that he made no allusions, made no references. He left the spotlight on the kids for the entirety of this process while evidently was deep thought and had come to terms with. And I think that that type of leadership, leadership that puts the children in the purpose of the of the of the role ahead of themselves. Even though it's an emotional challenge, speaks volumes to his character. His relationship with the kids, I think, was captured very well in a set of, what, sixty-five or seventy-five different columns. If it's coming graduation. Yes.
Just for the record, I I did get two of those columns. Gracie said, I've worked with you on the board, I'm giving you my. Right, you know, and I apologize, I forgot who the second one was. Oh, Tricia's, Tricia's. Absolutely, right, that's amazing, it's a career. We would be remiss if we didn't also. Look at the next motion, which is. Retirement of our custodian, Edwin Edwin Taylor, who was here for thirty-six years, so another individual. Who was here for his entire career, and even Anne O'Neill, who was at the high or at the middle school, the face of our our. Our little window there, sixteen years. These are not insignificant, and we we need to. Applaud all of these individuals. Thank you, Mike, for pointing that out.
I didn't know, I don't know. That went all that well.
We, Mike and I chat almost every morning. We have a number of employees who are coming up on these milestones. And unfortunately, we're gonna, you're gonna see a few more in the non-instructional ranks who've hit these pretty impressive number of years, and it's time for. And to relax and enjoy the rest of their retirement, so, you know, we. We're a bit concerned, the labor force is tough to, it's not so easy to find people to fill in and and work anymore, but we're hopeful that this will give an opportunity to. Another generation of individuals who want to come and spend another thirty years with us, so.
So, any other thoughts on this? All right, so. All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, so, wow, I am thrilled and honored to have been selected as president, mostly because I love short meetings. This now may be one. May I have a motion for adjournment? And a second? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you, folks.